Meeting at 3:15 PM. Now, we will call the meeting of the Waco City Council on September 5th, 2023 to order at still 3:15 PM. Please join me for a moment of silence. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary's staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a work session item? Seeing no one has registered to speak, we will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from the city manager.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Got a big crowd here today. Thank y'all for being here. We, mayor and council, we have no changes on the agenda this afternoon, but I did want to do two employee recognition items, and the first one, I'm going to turn it over to city attorney Richie.
Counsel, and I know he's going to be embarrassed, but Rashawn Stevens, would you stand? I want to introduce y'all to our Baylor intern, Baylor Law School intern for this year. Rashawn is a Baylor Law student and is interning with us and is a former member of the military and wants to be a municipal lawyer, but unfortunately has to go back into the military for at least three years, and so, or he would be very recruited very heavily in Waco, but I wanted to introduce y'all to him.
Welcome. Thanks for being here today.
Jennifer, can I add that Rashawn is a wonderful student at Baylor Law School and an active Army captain. He's been a great volunteer at the Veterans Clinic at the Heart of Texas Veterans One Stop as well. He's just an all-around great guy, so good to see Rashawn here today.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
Very cool. Our second recognition, and the timing couldn't work out better because we've got a work session presentation from the convention center here in a few minutes, but wanted to highlight that the Waco Convention and Visitors Bureau won five awards last week, I believe, right? Yeah, in the last couple of days, and really acknowledge the work of the team. Those awards were given out at the Texas Association of Convention and Visitors Bureau Conference, the annual conference. We entered five categories and we won five categories. So, that's awesome. Well, let me say it differently. We won first place in four, second place in one. So, that's dang near a sweep. Very good job, and that's in the categories of convention centers that have budgets over a million dollars, so competing against some heavy hitters around the state. You'll see those on the screen here, they're down on the table here, and I won't walk through every single one of them, but of the awards, but you can take a gander at them later. But it does recognize a lot of the campaign work that's been going on and special event work that's going on in our market, and just wanted to give a chance for the CBB team to stand up and be acknowledged by the public and say a thanks to them. So, please, if y'all don't mind standing up, I know we've got quite a few.
Yeah, thanks for all of your work. It's a really cool time. I would hope each of you feel the moment Waco's in right now in getting to sell something that really is special, and that's our community and our people and our businesses and the opportunities here, and seeing the creativity that each of you deploy and the innovation and the kindness and the warmth and hospitality that each of you carry is palatable, it's real, and it's not surprising that you'd win these awards, but it was fun. It's about a million degrees on Saturday, and I saw our mobile tour bus, our mobile visitor center at the Baylor game, and just, I mean, just right in the middle of the action with hundreds of people from out of town coming by and learning about our community. And so, just thank you for all you do, and you do it well.
Thanks, mayor. We'll hear some more commentary from the CBB team here in a few minutes. We do have three public hearings today. The first is public hearing 639, which sets our tax rate at 75.5 cents per hundred dollars valuation. We'll note that is the third straight year of reduction in tax rate. Our second public hearing is public hearing 640, which will approve and adopt an updated service and assessment plan for the Waco Tourism Public District, Improvement District. And the third public hearing, 641, is adding a definition to our code of ordinances for agricultural operations for compliance with HB 1750 out of the 88 Texas Legislative Session. Clint, well, actually, it's not Clint today, is it? Laura Wagstaff will be covering that in the work session later on. Hey, did you notice that? It's not in my notes, and I got your last name right. I'm on point today. We have 42 resolutions on the agenda today. Big agenda, definitely. The next couple of agendas will be large because we're, of course, starting our annual budget program, and so lots of agreements coming at you. I'm going to highlight just a couple of them, a couple of resolutions today. First is Resolution 648, which council member Holmes will appreciate, approves a professional services agreement for design, surveying, and construction services with RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture for the 84-acre China Spring Park Development Project. RVI is being recommended for selection based on their experience across the state, but also on similar projects here in Waco, including Brazos Park East.
Yeah, the city manager Ford, yeah, I'm excited about this. Seeing, I know it's a very deliberate process. I know when we first announced that we acquired the land out there, I think people thought we were going to have swing sets out there the next week or something, but we're having to go through a lot of planning here, engineering, and a very deliberate, but clearly moving forward, and this is kind of the first step, the design here for that park. I see Jonathan Cook and Tommy Bach are both out here, depending on you guys to make sure this thing stays on track, but excited about getting this thing launched.
Definitely. I'm going to let this, we had a slide made, I'm going to let it sit up there on the screen for a minute, and I'll talk from it, just to take your attention. But no, we're pretty excited. The parkland that we're talking about is outlined in red. Again, 84 acres, and very excited about the ability to connect it into the trail system that runs across the dam, as well as its positioning adjoining other Corps of Engineers property. Could be quite an add out in the China Spring area and even for portions of neighborhoods along Lake Shore accessing new corporate property. All right. Next resolution I wanted to highlight is Resolution 677. Council will recall from earlier in the year, March, there's an informal report on drought planning, and it mentioned the need to acquire some pumps in the event we were going to need to pump water out of the Brazos River. And Resolution 677 seeks to accomplish that through a ratification because when, you know, staff looking at the timeline of acquisition needed to get those pumps in hand, so we made an order in August on the 14th and expect delivery of the pumps in December. And given that we're currently projecting to move to stage three water restrictions, well, here in the next four to eight weeks, depends on weather, we really wanted to have these on hand later in the year so that we could start taking advantage of our Brazos water. I will say that, you know, the potential is there for stage three and stage four. Stage four potentially around the turn of the year as we move into the early part of 2024. So, these pumps are going to be critical as we look at dealing with our drought. Also of note, you know, we do have some other utilities for these when we're not in drought conditions in the water utilities department, so it's not a single use that we're expecting to get out of the pumps.
I appreciate our city manager and city staff thinking forward into the future as water becomes more and more of a precious resource in the state of Texas and in other places in the Southwest and in our country. I think that we need to be thinking very strategically, as our mayor often says, and put on those 70-year goggles as we look at water. So, I appreciate this acquisition and thinking more about the Brazos where we have some historic water rights acquired in the last few years and continue those types of decisions and purchases going forward.
All right. The screenshots on the projector there are straight off of our Water Utilities page. If someone does want to monitor day by day as the lake falls, that gauge on the left is something to keep your eyes on.
And I'll just add that while it's not advisable from any sort of city action plan, I would advise everyone in the crowd, if you're of the praying variety, to go ahead and say a prayer or two for rain in the coming days because as we move towards stage three and stage four restrictions, no one here on council, no one at the city is looking forward to having those restrictions in place for our citizens in our community, but it's what we have to do to maintain our water as a resource. And so, the more rain we can get in the coming days, I know Brad, like you said, depending on weather, the better. So, yeah, pray for rain if you get a spare minute later this evening.
All right. We have 10 ordinances on the agenda today, nine of which are first readings and one is a second reading. This large batch of ordinances represents quite a bit of work by city staff, and particularly something that could, you know, you could read this agenda and perhaps pass right by, but represents a lot of work by staff, is ordinances 685 to 687 related to the fire and police contract negotiations. These ordinances represent, you know, months' worth of meetings of the negotiating teams, actually since February. We've been meeting to craft the agenda, craft the agreements covered in the agenda items. Both the police and fire associations have voted on these multi-year agreements and both passed with nearly unanimous votes. I think Ryan can confirm, I think there was maybe one vote to the negative on both fire and police, so we've got some room to go, is what I'm hearing. No, but the vast majority of members in both associations appreciated what the teams put together. Presidents of the associations, Vern Darlington for police and Philip Burnett for fire, have spoken with appreciation about the terms in these agreements that are being put forth. I did want to highlight the members of the city negotiating team, Missy Pachaski. Missy, are you here? I don't know if she is, she's not here. Kim Coogan, sir from Legal, thanks, Kim. Nick Sarpy, Nick. Hey, Nick. Nick's up front. Low-key Nick. Ryan Holt, of course, and then our two chiefs, Chiefs Victorian, Chief Summers. Really want to say a special thanks to each one of those team members for bringing these items forward. And then Ordinance 689 is a change benefiting our water and wastewater customers, which will allow users to be refunded their deposit a little bit earlier instead of waiting 24 months for that refund of the deposit. Deposit, we're moving that to 12 months, assuming they have good payment history. This follows with recent equity measures that we've implemented within our water rate and billing structure. So, excited to bring that forward to the council today as well.
Uh, city manager Ford, I have a question on 689. As I was reading the report, we're asking folks, or we're telling folks, you have your water cut off for non-payment. Times are hard for everybody, but then we're telling them, okay, now you have to have another deposit on top of the fee that we're charging them to turn it back on. So, my question is, how big is that amount? And are we taking into consideration that these folks are already having a hard enough time trying to pay their water to the point that they get turned off, and then we're telling them, okay, to turn it back on, you have to pay a deposit and another fee? So, how much is that fee? Are we taking into consideration the hard times that we're going through right now and all the extra other fees that we are putting on to our residents, such as the upcoming street fee that we're going to put in and all these other, two other fees that we're putting in? So, can we not take into more consideration of our folks that are having a hard time trying to pay their water bills?
I'll let Paul speak to that. I think the deposit range is $75, and it moves up, at least in the residential class of customers. Paul, you want to add on any value you might think might answer the council members' questions?
Yes, sir. I'll attempt to provide some information on that, council member. So, the deposit that we're reducing from 24 months to 12 is when you open an account. Whenever someone ultimately has their water service turned off for non-payment, that typically is a number of months late. It could be as many as three months late. So, they have to pay back what they owe, and then if they don't have a deposit on record to get their water turned back on, they would have to make, they would have to have a deposit in place again because they're not in good standing. So, it's a combination of the outstanding water bill, and again, that can be a month and, two months to three months, once they have their water turned off that they've actually not paid. So, they have to make that right, and then if they don't have a deposit on record, they would have to make another deposit at that time.
I understand all that, Paul. What I'm saying is, isn't there another way that we can help these folks? I guess I didn't state my question right. They're having a hard enough time because, you know, water, we have to have our water, and to have it cut off, that's not because we want it to cut off, they can't pay it. And some folks can't pay it, and I put myself in that position. How can we pay what we owe plus another fee, plus the other fees that we're adding on to them on our water bill? Can we not find a way to help folks that have their water turned off for non-payment? And legitimately so, I'm talking about a single person who's got a job, two, three jobs, a senior citizen like myself, you know? Sometimes things get hard financially. What do we do to help folks in that situation? That's my question, Paul. And can we not just be so strict on the amount to turn the water back on? We have to have water. So, what I'm asking is, is there some way we can help folks to turn their water back on? They're having a hard enough time. I don't want to go through all that again, but do we have something in place where we can help folks to get the water turned back on?
So, if council's willing, what I'd like to do is between, it's on first reading today, and it'll be on second reading at our next meeting, and we can bring you back a report on all the things that we do, that we have in place today where we try to help people make their payment and what we can do there. So, I can bring that back at the next meeting if that's okay with council.
That's fine with me. I just, I know we need help out there. Everybody needs help some kind of way, and if we as a city can help our folks out a little bit more, we're adding all these other fees on. We need to think about all this.
Understand. If council's okay, we'll bring that back at the next meeting when we have second reading.
Thank you, Paul.
Yes, ma'am.
Just for clarity, while I do think this is a great idea, that as opposed to 24 months, you would get your deposit returned at 12, is that right?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Now, the only question I have is, so if I have water services and move within the city, does everything transfer with me, or is that a new, are we beginning again?
It's my understanding that the deposit would transfer with you if you moved to another location and opened an account.
And so, at the 12th month, then I just get a credit on my bill, or what are we doing?
Credit.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Mayor, that completes my report. Take any questions.
Question on resolution. You went by too fast for me, Bradley. On 671 and 673 about the deputy sheriffs, on 671, you say you have four for this project. And then in 673, is that an additional deputy sheriff, or is that one of the four that we're talking about in 671? That's just a question. I don't have a problem with it, I just want to know if we're actually having five deputy sheriffs or four.
I'm going to let Cody take that one from the podium.
Cody Patel, Director of Sol waste. So, we still have four, we've had four for several years, and 673 is actually a sublease with Keep Waco Beautiful for our downtown deputy, so it's still the same as last year and previous year, so it's still just four.
Still four. Nothing against deputy sheriffs, and my grandson is one, so I just want to know. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other items? The council would like to pull from the consent agenda. If not, the consent agenda will include Resolution 2023, 643 through 683. The next item on the agenda is the work session, items 2023, 629 through 632.
All right. Mayor, we're going to start off with United Way team coming up to the table. Invite them up for a discussion of the Waco McLennan County United Way Child Well-Being Report. I believe that the United Way team has passed those out at your places, and if you're not familiar, United Way has led a, really a community-wide initiative, the McLennan County Child Well-Being Movement, and developed an action plan which includes strategies to address the need for high-quality, early-learning opportunities and stronger supports in our community for children. Inviting Wendy Ellis, Executive Director, as well as Haley O'Connell, Director of Impact and Engagement, both from United Way here in McLennan County, to present their report today and look forward to their comments. Wendy?
Thank you, Bradley. Mayor and council and staff, we appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today and share this information. Hopefully, as most of you know, United Way has been working in the McLennan County area for a long time, and in fact, in October, we will begin celebrating 100 years of service in the Waco and McLennan County area. And through that time, we've primarily been known as a funder, and in those 100 years, we've put over $100 million back to work into the community through funding grants for local nonprofits that help people improve their health, their education, and their financial stability, and then also providing safety net services if any of our residents find themselves in a moment of crisis. We hope that we can keep it at just a moment and not something that continues to roll for years for them. And so, that's primarily what we're known for as a funder, but we also take our work as a convener and a collaborator very seriously, and for our programmatic work, we really wanted something that speaks to the heart of our community and keeps the voice of residents at the center of what we're doing. And so, with that in mind, that's kind of how we, how the McLennan County Child Well-Being Movement began. It was a way of looking at the quality of life for some of our most vulnerable residents, ages zero to five, and their families, and how, as a community, not as an organization, but as a community, how do we help improve that quality of life? And so, that's what we want to talk to you about today, is the movement, and we are going to try to cover some ground pretty quickly just to level set and give you a little bit of history of how we got to where we are today and the move forward and what's happening now and what we see for the future. So, but if at any point you have any questions or anything, please don't hesitate to interrupt us because we want to make sure you leave today knowing everything you want to know about the McLennan County Child Well-Being Movement.
All right. Well, in 2009, Waco Foundation commissioned a research study that sought to understand the quality of life of children and families in our community, and out of that work came the Smart Babies Initiative, which some of you might be familiar with. Fast forward to 2018, the Waco Foundation transitioned the Smart Babies Initiative over to United Way, and they've really entrusted us to kind of take this work into a new era. So, we subsequently have named this new iteration of the work, the McLennan County Child Well-Being Movement. And ultimately, the premise of the work is to take a cross-sector approach to strategically meeting the needs of children ages zero to five and their families in the McLennan County area. So, as Wendy mentioned, kind of the aspiration for the movement is really to allow residents to shape the work moving forward and, yeah, because we really want it to serve as a reflection of the dreams and aspirations of our community. So, as you can see here, we have very intentionally structured the movement in such a way that residents of Waco McLennan County are central, and then we've got a few key groups here poised around them, ready to kind of take action on their vision. And then United Way, our role from the get-go has really just been to serve as a facilitator of this work so that we could make space for residents to, yeah, really voice their aspirations, and then in response, we could mobilize community stakeholders to respond to that vision. And you can reference the full list of partners in the inside cover of your copy of the report in front of you, and I would just like to acknowledge that many of them, many of the members of our core partner team and community advisory board are in the room today, so. So, when Waco Foundation handed us the baton, it made sense that the first step would be to update the research. It had been over a decade since their initial report went out, and so, we needed to first understand what the current condition of children and families in our community was since that initial report went out. So, we engaged consultants to help us create an updated report, which we have titled, "Are the Children Well?", and we released that report in May of 2021. Now, in the interest of time, like Wendy said, we're not going to dive very deep into all the specific findings, and would encourage you to take some time to review the data and the report on your own time, but just to touch on a few of the high points, you know, any good research study has both quantitative and qualitative data. So, focusing for a second here on the quantitative piece, one of the core elements of the 2009 report was the Child Well-Being Index. So, this is a set of indicators pertaining to the child, the family, and our community, and we really sought to replicate this index in our iteration of the report so that we could see how the data had changed from 2009 to 2021. And the reason why the index looks at these three categories is because this work is really rooted in a whole-child, two-generational approach, understanding that family stability and the community environment in which kids grow up is directly, or even sometimes indirectly, related to the ability of a child to succeed in life. So, our consultants took the data values for each of these indicators, calculated them together into a score, and then mapped those scores by zip code. So, here you can see how that panned out when we mapped all those scores. The dark blue and light blue zip codes are those that are demonstrating very low or low child well-being scores, and then kind of the lighter orange and yellow represent zip codes experiencing very high or high child well-being scores. And I'd like to point out that half of the zip codes in our county are those dark blue and light blue areas. So, 70% of children under the age of six in McLennan County are living in those zip codes that are demonstrating low child well-being scores. So, that equates to 14,000 children in our county. And just to highlight real quick, you know, in the interest of time, we won't linger here, but some of the zip codes demonstrated a change from 2009 to 2021, but a majority of them did not change their child well-being score. And then on the right-hand side of the screen here are a few indicators that demonstrate a few significant changes over the decade, but for the most part, we've seen very little change. In fact, we've seen an increase in the reported cases of child abuse and neglect from 2009 to 2021. So, looking at just this lack of significant change over a decade's time really has served as a call to action to us to evaluate, okay, what do we, you know, how could we approach this differently and maybe rethink the way that we've traditionally sought to solve community issues? And then now jumping to the qualitative component, we mentioned that authentic community engagement was a real cornerstone of this work. So, we hosted dozens of community conversations to understand residents' aspirations for a community that better supports its children and families. So, our consultants then sifted through everything that we heard from residents, all of their dreams and aspirations, coupled with the quantitative data, and they lifted out these seven key themes that are resounding from within our community. And I'm going to hand it back over to Wendy to touch more on these.
So, we know the challenge with great research is not to let it go up on a shelf somewhere and gather dust, but to transition it to action. And the question always becomes, how do you take this research and put it into action? And so, for us, we knew that the key to that being successful with this work was to leave it in the hands of the residents who were on the community advisory board and the core partner team and had already invested so much of themselves in this work. So, when those seven themes were identified, we took those back to the community residents, and we said, okay, these are the areas we're looking for change. What are your solutions? What are your ideas and suggestions? We gathered all of that information, we took it back to the community. We gathered all of that information. We took it back to the community advisory board, the core partner team, to incorporate those resident-led solutions into the development of the Community Action Plan. And then the idea being that the Community Action Plan is created to be used as a decision-making tool. It gives some parameters. It lets you know what residents are looking for, where their priorities are, and the areas that they are most interested in seeing changed to help improve the quality of life for their children. And so that's really what we want this plan to be and how it's designed to be utilized is as a decision-making tool. And so what we found was when we took the "Are the Children Well?" report, we took those seven themes that were there, and then we transitioned them. When we started looking at the action plan in front of you, you'll notice a couple of different things. Those seven themes became five focus areas because as we looked at the interconnectedness of some of the action steps recommended in some of the different themes, one couldn't be accomplished without the other, and so they were kind of combined together. But there's a continuity from the themes to the focus areas. So nothing's been left out. It's just been rearranged a little bit. And the other thing you may notice when you look at the strategies and objectives in the action plan are that there are some things in there that are mentioned that are already in process, that have been in the works or have been part of community action for a long time. But it was still something that residents highlighted as a top priority for them. And we felt like including it in the report or in the plan, even though it was already happening, just kind of validated the need for it, and it also shows what a priority it is for our residents. So, and it holds us accountable to report back to them on the progress being made in those areas and make sure that communication on those requests is not lost. So we obviously have been invested in this work for a long time, and we're really passionate about it. And we're at the point now where we're starting to see successes, and we're starting to see some great things happen as a result of the work. But we're not really here to talk to you about that today. What we're here to talk about today is how the city's been involved, where the role that city departments have played, and then ultimately, moving forward, where do we see the opportunity for partnership continuing? But we wanted to share this with you, just to say there are successes happening as a result of the plan already. And I will highlight bullet point number two. We joined the statewide Early Matters Coalition. And this is a group of communities and organizations that works to advance policies that support specifically literacy and child readiness for children ages zero to eight. And the coalition heard about the work through the McLennan County Child Wellbeing Movement, and they actually invited Waco to join that movement. And so we joined El Paso, Dallas-Fort Worth, San Antonio, Austin, and Houston as the leaders in the Early Matters Coalition, the smallest community by far. But we're really proud that the work being done through this initiative has given Waco recognition as a statewide leader among communities working to improve the quality of life for children. The Language Justice Initiative is another one. You'll find a lot of strategies in the action plan related to language access and language justice. And these four bullet points here have all been addressed directly from the plan through a partnership between United Way and the Hispanic Leaders Network. You have a postcard at your seat as well, and it has a QR code that you can scan, and it will take you to all the digital resources. But the Language Access Toolkit is designed specifically for the business community to give them some very simple, tangible ways to work with their customers and their employees who maybe feel more confident or comfortable communicating in a language other than English. And it helps everybody understand how we can be more inclusive through that environment. And then finally, one of the large areas in the plan that you will see a lot of strategies spoken about is in the areas of childcare and early education. And there are a number of things happening in that arena right now. What we've seen is that as a result of the pandemic, that kind of unveiled the role that childcare, the lack thereof, plays on the ability of workforce to be present and to do their jobs. And so the business community is recognizing the impact of that and very eager to be at the table in these conversations as well. And so we're continuing our convening work in this area, a number of different meetings and programs that will be happening. And the goal and the idea being that hopefully next year, we'll be back to visit with you with some really exciting movement in this arena. We're looking forward to where this is taking us as a community.
All right. Now I'd like to kind of transition to share with you all how a number of city departments have been actively collaborating in support of the movement's vision. So on the screen here are a handful of ways that city staff have been engaged in the work. So starting with Deputy City Manager Deidre Emerson, Josh Caballero from Housing and Community Development, and Jennifer Branch from Economic Development. These three have served as active members on the movement's core partner team since its inception. We're very grateful for their participation and their leadership. We also have several city departments who have staff that are actively participating in the movement's primary partner meetings. So now that we've got the action plan in place, these are meetings where we're convening partners to discuss some next steps and to identify focus areas or priority areas from the focus areas to focus on. So those departments that have participated include Housing and Community Development, Parks and Recreation, Economic Development, and the Health District. We're also seeing these departments utilize the action plan strategies to frame their internal data collection needs and strategic planning processes. So to name just a few of those, United Way was invited to participate in an interview with the consultants who assisted with the creation of the Economic Development Strategic Plan, which resulted in the inclusion of our Child Wellbeing Report and Action Plan as resources under the Talent, Attraction, and Retention section of that plan. And that section really focuses, as you are probably all aware, on childcare as a critical component to economic development. So we're really grateful for that inclusion. And then Parks and Recreation works really hard to collaborate with several organizations to ensure that their programming is meeting the health and wellness needs of our entire community. And they have been really looking to our Community Action Plan and the strategies in the plan that pertain to after-school, summer, and physical activity programming to ensure that, you know, as their programs are ever-evolving and changing, that they're in alignment with the specific asks from the community. And then as the Department of Housing and Community Development was putting together their strategic plan, Josh saw a natural alignment with the work of the Neighborhood Revitalization Task Group and some strategies pertaining to housing laid out in the action plan. And he's really used that to inform what additional data is needed to gather from the community and to inform ongoing efforts by that task group so that, you know, they're not recreating any community listening process that, you know, had already been done through our work. And likewise, we have been active participants on the core partner team of that Neighborhood Revitalization Task Group. And then the city's internal DEI committee also reached out to us as they heard about some of the language justice work that we're doing in partnership with Hispanic Leaders Network and shared that the city is working on a communications and language equity plan. And we were able to share our language access research and some of the different communication equity-related strategies in the action plan with them. Again, another instance where rather than going out and collecting community data that already existed, we were able to just pass that on to them, to use that to inform that plan. And then lastly, we have, as an organization, long been members of the Healthy Women and Children Coalition, which is out of the Health District. And so there's some active conversation happening with their staff about areas pertaining to women's health in the action plan and some really clear alignment with the focus, the current focus of the coalition. And so some really exciting opportunities there. And, you know, we share all these examples to highlight that this is exactly how and why the action plan was designed to be used. And that is not to ask folks to necessarily start doing new or additional work than what they're already doing, but for organizations to self-select and kind of find alignment with strategies in the action plan and figure out where it makes sense for them to plug in in according to their existing efforts. So our hope is that, you know, wherever work is being done in the community, that the plan can be used to ensure that the voice of the community is being considered and their specific asks are considered in how, you know, community initiatives come together. So just to summarize kind of where we're at, where we're going, you know, we've said before, we would love for the Community Action Plan to be used as a decision-making tool by local leadership. We are actively convening partners to identify which of the priority areas from within the plan we should be focusing on right now. You know, Rome wasn't built in a day, and the action plan contains over 100 action steps. And so that's definitely not going to be accomplished overnight, but we've got to start somewhere. And so we're going to continue to facilitate partnerships to advance child and family well-being in the county. And then on a more practical note, we're about to engage in a coalition-building process just to ensure that we are creating a sustainable structure and format to continue the work of the movement so that it's sustainable, you know, well into the future. And ultimately, success for this work will be measured by whether or not in five or 10 years we're seeing those child well-being scores change for the better. And ultimately, you know, it's really up to the community to let us know if we're being successful, if their voices are being heard and the needs that they voiced are being met.
So I want to just reiterate or touch on something that Haley just mentioned to you because I think it's really important, and in all that she said, it could easily be glossed over. But the purpose of this plan again is not to ask people to put more work on their plate. We know that everybody is already doing so much with so little. And the idea is, is that people can use this as a guideline so that as they take on this work, they're making sure that they're coming up with solutions that are going to be appreciated by the residents and are going to speak to some of those specific details that they're asking for. And so it's really important to us to recognize that all of the partners who are engaging in this work are self-selecting and choosing the areas where they are getting involved and where they think they can help make a difference in the community. And when we took this plan or when we took this idea to the residents, not only did they brainstorm for solutions and ideas to some of the challenges, but they also brainstormed a list of primary partners and organizations that they felt like would be key and pivotal to the success of this plan moving forward. And so I want to talk to you a little bit about some of the places that the city was identified by residents as being a key partner to help move some of these initiatives forward. A large portion of it falls in the childcare area in relation to economic development with the idea of looking at companies who are expanding or seeking to relocate here. And when they're asking for incentive packages, can there be consideration given to organizations who are providing childcare benefits to their employees, whether it be onsite childcare or stipend or some other childcare benefit in their package? But looking at those companies who are creating a family-friendly workplace and will be good corporate partners and good corporate neighbors in our community. And then also looking at public-private partnerships for advancing and improving childcare. What we've seen since the pandemic started is that we've seen a wage reset in a number of different industries. As competition for employees has become fierce and fewer employees have become available, we've seen wage resets in most of our industries. That hasn't happened in childcare and early education. Workers in the childcare industry are still among the lowest-paid industries in our area. And they have some of the smallest benefit packages as well. So as we look at public-private partnerships and advancing that, where consideration can be given to organizations that are paying livable wages to childcare employees, are prioritizing their benefits and their professional development, those things would be really important to be considered in that decision-making process.
Just a quick question on that. Is, would you say that in McLennan County that reliable, safe, and affordable childcare has been somewhat in decline since the pandemic? That there's more demand for it than there has been in the past?
You know, I'm not sure I would completely say that just because of the fact that we probably had more childcare providers survive and stay open during the pandemic than a lot of other regions did. But what we do know is that 65% of children in McLennan County are growing up in a childcare desert, which means there's not enough licensed seats available where they live to be able to provide service to everybody who needs it. And we do know that there are substantial waiting lists for the majority of really high-quality providers. And so when we look at...
And is that a shift, would you say, in the last several years? Or is this just a trend that's...
Yeah, I think maybe a trend. I think probably there is a shift too because what we are seeing and what has impacted some is that our childcare centers are still out there. But what's happening is sometimes they're closing classrooms because the turnover rate on employees is so high, they can't keep enough employees to keep all of their classrooms open. And so they're serving maybe fewer children, even though they're there and still open. They're not serving as many children as they were pre-pandemic.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's probably a better, that's probably where the trend comes in of more people on the waiting list. Centers are still there, but they're serving fewer children.
Fewer children. Okay. Thank you.
And so those are some of the areas identified in relation to economic development where the city may be able to come in and support improvements in the childcare landscape from McLennan County. And then talking about educational opportunities, as we mentioned earlier, Parks and Recreation already does a fantastic job and offers some tremendous programming. But there was a real need identified by residents for additional after-school and summer care programs and options. So any opportunity to expand those programs, I think, is something that would be really beneficial to residents in the area. And then when we look at the other three areas, the other focus areas, the access to resources, one of the things that we saw as a common theme across all five focus areas was that there are resources available to people, but people either lack knowledge of the resources being available or they lack the ability to access those resources. So the efforts that the city is putting into communications and utilizing new channels to communicate and reach people where they are is really beneficial and is going to be huge to helping people get connected with what's going on moving forward. But we saw that across not just access to resource, but even in education and after-school programming and all of the things. There's things out there that people just don't know about. And finding ways to connect and make sure they know about that is really going to be key to success moving forward as well. And then taking action. As Haley mentioned, you know, success for this work is somewhat going to be defined by where we see those child well-being markers in five or 10 years and also by what the community tells us. But one of the key areas that they were looking for is a way to integrate more resident feedback into the decision-making process across leadership areas. And so when we look at how that's already being done through housing and some of the other areas, as we continue to be more consistent about bringing that resident feedback into the process and we make that an ongoing part of the process and a systemic change, then that's going to be one sign of true success for this initiative as well. When people feel like their voice is heard and they're at the table where previously they haven't been, that's going to be an indicator of success for this work as well. And so one of the ways we may be able to do that is looking at community connectors, individuals that can serve as liaisons between the city and the residents, representing a vast variety of different types of communities. It's amazing how, you know, you think about the telephone game that we used to play when we were kids, and that word of mouth still works better than almost anything in getting the word out in the community. And so the more people we have involved in that process, the more it helps. And then finally, just in general, thinking about the well-being of our children and what the residents have asked for to help improve the quality of life for those children ages zero to five, how can you align that in your city budget, in your planning, and make sure that some of your priorities and strategies are in line with the Community Action Plan moving forward? And just keeping this at the forefront of conversations and making sure that our children are taken into consideration as those decisions are made. So I know that's a lot, and I apologize if we moved really quickly, but we wanted to make sure to get beginning to end and kind of give you the big picture. Happy to answer any questions, though.
Thanks for being here so much. Great content, and I'll open it up for questions or comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both for this information. United Way has been a strong partner of our city, and we're glad to see it increasing and expanding because work still necessarily has to be done. Quick question. In the "What Has Changed" slide, you look through the times from 2009 to 21. I saw that, I mean, while the, most of the identifiers made minimal changes, teen pregnancy made, and teen birth rate and birth rates of mother without high school diplomas made a significant decline. Is there a specific program that you could point to or attest to that, that data point?
So I'm going to say that that was before both of our times, specifically in Waco and working on this. I do know that during that time, and I want to say it was the Waco Foundation, that had a push towards education about teen pregnancy and awareness. And there's also an organization in town that does work in the high schools with teen pregnancy awareness. And that program has been instrumental and has been involved for a number of years as well. And so I think that seeing that concentrated push in that specific area and a number of partners that came together to address that specifically is probably why you see the significant change there. And so that kind of leads us to, if we could use that approach on some of these other areas and convene and collaborate together, then that's where we're going to see the success versus being in our... versus being in our individual silos.
Which we can do very well here. Thank you.
I want to also thank you for this report. I don't have a question. I just have a comment. There are several people that I know and women of my generation that are taking care of kids because childcare is so high. And, you know, the young folks that are working simply can't manage to pay childcare and continue working. So people in my generation are taking care of their grandchildren or their great-grandchildren to help out. I know there's nothing that you can do about this, but the charges and I guess if you can afford it, it's well. I mean, you want your child well taken care of, but some of the childcare services are way, way too high as some of my friends have told me what they were asked to pay. And I can understand why they couldn't afford it.
I mean, 16, 17 years ago for my two sons was a house note.
Yeah. And it's still high right now because four, $500 a week for one child, a baby or two, that's your whole paycheck. So I, I know that there's nothing you can do about it, but I was just wondering if there was conversation in, in the process of maybe we could bring that down so more people. Like you say, there's smaller number of kids in childcare, in a childcare facility, and I don't know if that's because we don't have folks trained to take care of child and you want trained people taking care of your child. I'm talking in circles now, but still, I know you can't.
No.
But has that entered into your conversations? The, the, the cost of childcare besides, outside of United Way and EOIC and all these other programs there out there?
So what we know is that 25% of residents in McLennan County are part of what we call an ALIS population. And ALIS stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. And those, that 25% of residents are not making enough money to truly afford the cost of living in the area. They're surviving, but they're not thriving. And so that is part of why we talked about like the wages have not reset for childcare workers and we're seeing such turnover in the childcare industries because people can't afford to pay more than what they're already paying for childcare. But unless there's an increase in what's paid, then there's, you know, limited money available to increase wages for childcare workers. And so we get caught in this cycle of extremely high turnover with those employees. And so that's where in the plan, you'll see a number of ideas and suggestions to address public-private partnerships and some ways that we can maybe help either offset expenses for some of our childcare centers or increase revenues going into them to be able to provide livable wages to those employees, keep the doors open and make it more affordable because we do recognize that there is a large portion of the population that just has trouble paying that childcare.
Thank you.
Holmes here. Yeah, great presentation. I was like Councilmember Bearfield when I looked at the, the key performance indicators and looked at the first couple and wow, it's not bad, you know? Over 10 years, we're making some improvements. Then we get down, there's a couple that are just out of whack, going the wrong way. But not only your efforts on turning around some of these, but accelerating the progress, the good progress on, on some of these other measurements, I think, is, is commendable. Um, and I, it seems like a lot of the issues, even workforce and transportation, but childcare really kind of floats to the top organically of, of making sure that, that men and women have, that can get to work, but they need a place to put their child in, in a safe environment, educational environment. And I'm anxious to look at other models that other cities have used in private, public-private partnerships that we can maybe model after. I did want to ask one quick question that, that, one thing that stuck out wasn't in the presentation, but you mentioned 55% of McLennan County kids live in childcare desert. Is that right?
65%.
65. Wow. How's that, roughly, how do you define childcare desert? If it's in the materials, I could-
Page 14 of the report.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, and how to define-
Childcare desert.
Yeah, this is looking at a ratio of kids, the population of kids in a zip code versus the available seats at licensed childcare centers in that zip code. And I will say, you know, on the childcare piece, this is why we're so jazzed about being part of Early Matters is we get to hear some innovative work that is happening in other cities. And I will say, we, we still have some work to do in being able to quantify the demand for childcare, understanding, you know, of those who are having their parents take care of their kids, is that a choice or, you know, is that their preference? Or if childcare spots that were affordable and safe and accessible were available, would they switch and enroll their kids? So that's kind of stuff that we've got going on the radar and we're exploring some, some different ways to kind of quantify that and some different innovative strategies that could be used.
Thank you.
This is really valuable. I think that, I really appreciate the collaborative effort that your organization takes and saw the, your work with the Communities of Faith. And I think that it's going to take really everyone in the city to come together to move forward. So strategically bringing creative partners and deploying innovation is really what's going to get us there. I really appreciate your thoughtfulness towards the childcare issues. Look forward to hearing more. We know that, that is one of the things that we hear about anecdotally is that we have these great jobs in our community. We've worked really hard as a city to bring livable wage jobs to the city, but if you don't have access to childcare, you can't go get those jobs. And so it's really, truly an inhibitor to people being able to enter the middle class that we're working hard to make a reality in this community. So that is really exciting that we're trying to tackle that issue and we look forward to discussing this, all the things you discussed today and more around the childcare issue in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate your time.
Thanks.
All right. Mayor and Council, our next work session is Work Session 630, which is a discussion of Convention and Visitors Bureau Summer Snapshot. And since it's summertime, we've turned off the air conditioner in the room. No, we're, we're working through an air problem here. If it feels a little stuffy, Dan's team and Facilities team are on it trying to cool this building off. But this, this presentation, we've got Joel Martinez, Director of Aviation, as well as Dan Quant, our CBB Director, doing a collaboration, talking about a summer snapshot of attendance trends, visitor data, visitor data and spending, as well as talking about hotel occupancy. Looking forward, the teams have done a great job of producing some real quality data for the first time. I feel like Council getting a look at, a deeper dive in the visitor industry. So, Dan, I'm going to turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, Council, we really appreciate this opportunity to get before you for a few minutes and try to tell you what we're doing and how it's working. And so we start with where we get our data. And our data comes from, most of what you're going to see comes from a research firm we use called Zartico, which specializes in working with destination marketing organizations like us. So they talk our language. We also, and they use, by the way, they use primarily cell phone data and credit card data to come up with their numbers. We also, of course, use PlayStation, Smith Travel Research and Air DNA plus information direct from our partners, which is some of the best quality of all. So we go on, yes, our attractions attendance, we have had, you know, a great comeback, you know? All of these things you're going to see, you'll see the COVID ball going on. And this is a collection of our total attendance from these 14 different attractions around the city. And this year, we're on track to, to hit approximately 1.9 million visits to those attractions. Now, keep in mind that 2020, we're at just barely over a million. So it took a lot of years to get up to some of those other numbers, but we're getting back in about three years and, and doing very strong. So our attractions, we'd always love to host more people, but they're coming, coming back very well from this pandemic. Our top tourist attractions, what a shock, Magnolia is the number one attraction in town. That is no surprise to anyone. They are, they, they attract around a million plus every year. And our job right now is to try to target those people who are visiting here at Magnolia and get them to move to the other places. You know, we've already got them in town, they're at that place, but if we could give them messages while they're there and say, by the way, we've got Dr. Pepper across the street or we've got Texas Rangers down the block, those are the kind of things we're going to do to help use those people to get around our community. The, now that I get my glasses back on, the-
Dan, do you know if, is Magnolia still outdrawing the Alamo as of, as of now?
They're neck and neck. They're in a battle for control. Kind of like the Alamo itself, but-
I was like, but we don't have GLO issues.
They do very well. They do extremely well. And that's, I love bringing up that stat.
Going back to that slide one back on this one, I'm assuming Waco Surf is not a part of the data that y'all tried?
No, they are. They are, but they, they aren't at that high in the fraction.
At that level?
Yeah. As of yet, but they will be. We're going to talk about that in just a second. And this is just a graphic view of, you know, kind of the same thing. We've had this great steady rise from COVID and just another way of showing you that. Next, this is actually a slide from the Office of the Governor, Economic Development and Tourism. I mentioned this back last May when we had our Travel and Tourism Week. We had over $783 million spent, direct spending, no multipliers, direct spending in this town last year in 2022. By the way, that also generated $70 million in state and local taxes. So we, they're doing their part to kind of impact everything you need to do as, as community leaders to fund some of these projects. And plus spending is going on. Now, I wanted to look at it by council district because that's how we get our measurements. That's how we asked Zartico to give us the measurements, by council district. So let's, let's look here, shall we? District one, what, and we can subdivide these any way you want. For example, the odds of you running into a resident at Magnolia Table are one out of four because it's 75% visitors. Okay? So that, that's a huge thing there. District two, again, Magnolia Market, over a million people a year. It's high as 1.8 in some years, but I mean, and of course Baylor University, Union Hall is a fun one to throw in, everyone's got to eat. And the Dr. Pepper Museum and the Feral Center. And wait till, it'd be fun to look at this in a couple of years as we see the increase from, from the new pavilion. In District three, the fact that we're a shopping destination isn't a, isn't a shock, but we keep thinking it's Magnolia. And it isn't, Magnolia is part of it, but the Central Texas Mall, our marketplace and Richland Mall are a very big part of it. We also have, good and bad, we've got such, we've got medical tourism, which means people are coming here for service, but that also means sometimes they'll be here for a longer time, family, friends, and we can also help provide diversion for them.
District three is the proud premier healthcare tourism locus here of our, of our community.
Yes. I think we, we ordered the T-shirts like-
Shopping malls and, yeah.
We do have those T-shirts. Now, of course, the zoo and, and the next three on that list, I know they're all in the same place, but they're each doing different functions. It's like this building you're in, we're often hosting, you know, five or six different kinds of events in this, at the exact same time. While they can be hosting multiple kinds of events at the same time, they're just different events. That's why they make that list. My favorite though on this list is the little shop on Boski since it isn't open. You know? But it is such a part of the Magnolia Trail that the people that come here, it's more of a pilgrimage than anything, have to go there. And so that's, what's kind of fun to me about that stat. And then the last district here, of course, the airport and, and Waco Mammoth National Monument. Last year when I was representing our city at the Formula One race in Austin, I had more people talking to me about visiting Mammoth than they, than were talking to me about visiting Magnolia.
Is it still the, the gift shop, the most grossing per capita?
I honestly can't answer that. I don't know, but it should be if it is-
For all national parks?
Oh, wow. Impressive. Due to its size, I mean, the numbers that it produces for its size was the highest in the country.
Okay, those people are coming here, but not where, who's coming here? And this, I think, is an amazing chart here that shows that over a third of our visitors are coming from DFW. And when you look at the top four, that only represents, what, 14, 15 million people within striking distance of us? So we've got a lot of targets we can look at. And by the way, look farther down about four o'clock on that chart, see Tyler Longview at 1.3%. Remember that. I'm going to come back to that, but remember that. Okay, now let's go on to the next one because saying DFW, that's like, that's kind of a big target. So Zartico helps us break that down to these targets so that when we're doing our advertising, we could get down to the zip code on these so we could definitely zero in on the people that are coming here and also zero in on the people that are not to send them a message of why the heck aren't you coming here? Well, we want to get you over here.
That looks, that list of who's visiting our city, that looks like a baseball schedule that my grandson has. All these footwork and these people come, they're baseball players too.
And it's a feeding frenzy for some of the places in West too, is they're driving back and forth because they, they do very well off this. Visitor spending, this is slightly different. About a quarter of all our spenders come from DFW. So a little less than are actually visiting, but this shows that, yeah, we've got not half, but 43, 44% of the cities, it's a big part of the chart, but they represent less than 2% of our visitors.
Director Quant, Holmes here. What data, is this, does this cover, is this 2022 or?
This is, I'm sorry, this, this is exactly right now, the last 90 days.
This is in the last 90 days.
And we can give it in any, we can go back to 2019 with Zartico, but, but this one I want, just to call it a summer snapshot, we wanted to give you a summer snapshot mostly.
Thank you.
Yep. Now, we're back to Tyler because although Tyler's only 1.3% of our visitors, they're spending the most per day. So they're an important part of what we're doing. Now, we can go targeted there, but we don't want to go overboard in the sense that the actual number one city in terms of average spend per visitor is the combination of Butte and Bozeman, Montana. They only represented 0.1% of our visitors, but they were spending $626 a day. So whoever that one person was, we want them back, you know?
Can I, can I ask a point of clarification on average number of people per percentage point that we're talking about here? 1% equals roughly how many people?
Uh, it would be about, while we had, I'll, I'll mention this again a little bit, we had roughly 2 million visitors so far this summer, so.
I gotta do it on my calculator.
Yeah, okay. Okay, next.
Can I answer the question?
20,000.
20,000. I have other people that do numbers for me. Math. Okay, now this is our occupancy level, one of the most important, again, you see the COVID dip. If you're a hotel investor, you like this kind of chart because it's steady, it's stable. And we've got a great steady marketplace here. And, yeah, you see our highs at seven, or all-time high back in, just before COVID or as it started, 82%. But we still do many months every year in a 70 percentile. Go ahead. Oh yeah, this just keeps explaining all the data. But basically it's just how many people are in the rooms is what occupancy is. And then average daily rate, again, it's pretty stable. You make an investment in a hotel, you got a pretty good idea, you're going to get a good return on it here. Now, it's also important to know our, our average occupancy and average daily rate, what you just saw before this were for the whole community. So what this shows you is downtown. So what this shows you is downtown, and that's where all our new hotels are opening up right now, or not all, but almost all of our new hotels are opening up. Like you see downtown occupancy is 72.8%, outside of the downtown area, it's slightly down, not greatly down, but slightly down. And the ADR has got a little bit of a difference, downtown's at 164.38, and outside is down to 105. That's why that other chart is lower, because it combines everybody. Okay, the updates, we're adding 602 rooms in the next four to five months. I mean, one of the biggest surges you had was a few years ago, when you added 1,000 rooms in three years. Okay, and this is in a few months, so it's going to be amazing. Yeah, hit it one more time there. Okay, yeah, that's a 13% roughly increase in our hotel inventory. That's a big, that's going to, you will see some things on these, because it's hard to go through that kind of a change and not see some dips, because rates may adjust downward right away as the market shifts, and you're going to see, as people find the places, we're going to probably have a little bit of time with their trading customers rather than new customers, because they, oh, I want to go try this hotel now, because we've always stayed over here, Marge, and, and so that, that's what I think is going to happen here.
That's interesting, because the last time we had that bump, we also closed down a few, a few hotels were razed at the same time.
Well, and we don't.
We lost a bunch of rooms.
Yeah, and of course, we don't look to close anybody down, but that can have, I mean, that's, that's the fluctuations of the market. But we're hoping the, the hotels that are going to be opening downtown are all higher end, you know, a higher average daily rate, and so they're, they're competitive to each other downtown, they're not necessarily competitive to the rest of the community. They create compression in the market, so people start filling those, and the people that maybe used to stay there go out to some other places in Waco to stay, so it can, it can be very good for the market. Now, this is statewide, looking at us, on this one for 2023, currently, we're ranked fourth at 68.8%. By the way, the state of Texas average is 64.1, so we're doing very, very well. We have, and El Paso, I mean, you, you, you all yourselves can figure out what the strengths of each community is, you know, El Paso, with all the border activity, the military activity, all the media, you know, they've had a lot of media attention lately, all that kind of stuff, but each, each place is, has a, a strong base to go to, and that's what I love about looking at this, because they're all bigger nuts, you know? And we're sitting in the middle of three of them, and yet our occupancy is 68.8%. Very, very proud of that. Don't forget these guys, short-term locations, these are short-term locations in the whole area, not just within the city limits, but that's just, you know, and it's a tight bag, you keep zooming in. We have 101 short-term rentals just in 76101, or 76701, just in that one. According to, and this is the company Air DNA that I mentioned earlier, they keep track of this for us. The, now, at this one, this is important because it really looks cool, because there's a lot of numbers. But the other thing to show some of the differences in who they are, is that you see Sunday through, you know, the entire week for short-term rentals, you see the numbers during the beginning of the week. Those numbers are higher in the hotels. Okay? So people that are coming here and staying in the short term are not the same people that are coming here in the hotel, they're, they're doing a little kind of different stay. But this is important, it's a change in how people stay, many of you may see in short-term hotels. When we're marketing conventions, most want to stay in hotels, some want to stay in short-term rentals, they're all paying the hotel tax. So we want to be, make sure we're as aware of this as possible, so we can tell the market what's going on. Thank you. As of last July, there were 935 available listings in the greater Waco area. Out of those, as you said, you could see 890 were booked. That's important to keep in mind when we're looking at, I was talking before about potential dips coming in our market, we've also got a little competition for short-term rentals as well, at a $237 a night average rate.
Going one back on that, Dan, real quick, so shared room, this is just kind of new to me, I'm, I'm more an old-school hotel stayer, I haven't yet dipped my toe into Airbnbs, I know many have and have had wonderful experiences, but with shared room, let's say like you got two twin beds and you rent out one of them.
Yeah, actually, you rent out, you rent them all, both out to two different people.
People, wow.
That don't even know each other.
And then private room is you've got like a condo or a house and you're renting by room, but then the most, the most common is you're renting out the entire unit, whether that's a house or condo.
And we all, and when we look at these, the data we get from Air DNA, it's not just looking at everything we've got, we're looking at our area competitions, so we're looking at Austin, Fredericksburg, Temple, Tyler, all of those kind of things, so we can see how they're doing in comparison.
Do you have a sense in compare, comparing both our, our raw numbers of listings to other communities of our size, or our short-term rental occupancy rates to other communities of our size, just to give us a sense of what those forces look like?
Our, our numbers are kind of high, are, are, are higher than towns our size.
Numbers of uni, numbers of units or occupancy?
No, I'm sorry, numbers of units, numbers of units. Occupancy's about normal, we're kind of right in there. Now, the exception is a place like Fredericksburg, that I think right now has 1,700 short-term rentals, and they definitely have a much smaller population, but they've always leaned toward bed and breakfast and this and that versus some of that other kind of hotel development. Again, I, I already said, this summer, just this summer, we've had 2 million unique visitors, okay? And there, there's a difference in, because we can never leave a term alone, we got to play with it a little bit. And those 2 million visitors have each left town for a while and come back four and a half times this summer. So that's what, how you get 9 million total visitors, so if you've got, you've got someone from, now, a visitor, by the way, is defined as anyone 50 miles away or more. So if they drive in from Bryan, and either they come in from Dallas, they're a visitor. Or they come in from West, oh, and the West is a little close, but, but, so that's how we define this, but if you come more than once, you get counted a second time, unless you're do, unless you do the same thing within an eight-hour day. Okay, and we're a little bit down this year. I think it's the heat. 215 leads, and this is kind of switching from general tourism to our convention business, they've done, they increased their lead generation 41% in one year. I'm very proud of the work they're doing, and you see what potential impact the leads have, but my fun one is the next one, because they had 215 leads, but let's go to the next one, out of those 215 leads, they booked 175 of them. That's not a bad batting average. And you look at the definite attendees from those bookings, they booked more people than these population of Waco. Okay? With an estimated economic impact of over 12 million. Now, these aren't all going to come the same year, you know, some, we, we booked the National Square Dance Convention for 2026, so they're, they're going to, but it's also 5,000 extra people that don't normally live around here, so. The next one. Matter of fact, that goes perfectly into this, because we are also seeing an increase when we're hosting people at the convention center, how many are coming, not just from around Texas, that's our bread and butter, but they're coming from outside of Texas. And we look at this every month to see what's going on, and it talks about the types of things we're hosting as well as everything else. Our horizon, I already mentioned, we got, going to have, I think you're going to see this, you'll have people calling you saying, wait a minute, my business is down. Well, yeah, it probably is going to be a little bit, it's just going to trade around. The business for the town is not going to be down, but the individual business may have some fluctuations with occupancy and rates. We're also seeing that growth of all our non-traditional areas, you mentioned surfing earlier, this is going to be great for our future. I mean, to, we're working, we dream of being an Olympic training center for rowing, you know, and that's going to be, what a way to, another way to get Waco on the map, that'll be so much fun. Baylor Sports, well, you add Foster for the, and those other things, they just cry to a guy like me to host other things besides Baylor Basketball, you know? And we want to help them do anything we can to host other activities. The whole resurgence of the area, you want to be around a winner, I think that's why we've got 68.8% occupancy, you want to be a place where something's going on, and that's Waco. The ad agency funds, I talked about increasing demand for our, for our hotel rooms, we in, in our budget are increasing the ad agency by about 60%, so we can do more things for, to tell the story, so we can get more people in here. And finally, the non-Austin, that's not a nasty thing, I could make it that if you want, but that's not what I mean. We have the advantages that Austin has in terms of central location, great eating places, great meeting facilities, great lodging, all of those things, but we're a lot calmer, and our traffic's a lot better, and we want to tell people that story. Convention groups that are based in Austin, we want them, and they're closing down their convention center for a while, so we, because they're going to, they're doing another one. Dallas is doing another one. That's a, that's an important bandwagon to keep in mind, you know, there's a lot of people that are, are looking at the, the needs of the traveling public, and how can we, how can we serve those needs, you know, here in Waco? So that's basically what I've got to say, so I'm going to turn it over to my friend Hoel here.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Hoel Martinez, Director of Aviation. I want to give you a kind of a rundown of our kind of impact for tourism and visitors, and how the airport plays a factor into that. This here is a slide that shows year over year, year to date, we've had over 173,000 visitors, visitors to Waco Regional Airport. Now, this is obviously not our employment numbers, these are visitors that are coming, you know, from non-Wacoans that are coming into our area, as well as passengers, so this is combined. Kind of who makes up our, our visitors, this, actually, the, almost one-third, or, I'm sorry, two-thirds of our, of our visitors are kind of small, less than 1% of, of different cities, it didn't measure enough to kind of make that little slice of the pie there. But we have a wide range of visitors to our airport, so these are not, obviously, non-Waco residents coming to our facility. Our commercial employments, again, you can see that those numbers aren't in the thousands, or the hundreds of thousands like we saw there previously, but again, you can see the white line there, we can see that we are in line with 2021, and we're a little, I guess, between that and 2022, which is positive considering the number of flights that we have, even though they're on larger aircrafts. So our load factor rate is 66%, which is a 5% increase from this time last year. Non-airline traffic, so what does this mean? This is basically someone that doesn't fly on American Airlines and/or on a charter flight for like a Baylor sports team or a team that is playing against Baylor. So this is an aircraft that is coming in and out of our facility there. So you can see where our numbers, again, this is month over month that we're showing here, a lot of that is attributed to the training or the flight training that we take, take advantage of, but it also includes corporate business, like NetJets or Flex Jets, or Sanderson Farms that have their own fleet of aircraft that come into our airport and to our area, SpaceX as well, so those get counted on this, on this metrics here. So the airport's current priorities, again, to attract additional airline service, we've heard that request, and we've made our attempts to secure and improve our existing airline service. I mean, there's communities around the country that have lost their existing service to none, so we need to improve and secure that as well. We also want to improve our guest experience, so again, this isn't the terminal building, you know, update, but we're also doing some things there to improve that overall experience. And we also want to purvey, provide a safe and secure facility there, so FAA and TSA compliance is, is kind of an annual priority for us as well. So what have we done to attract additional service in the past, probably 10 months? We've had 10, or gone to two different conferences where we've had 10 face-to-face meetings with seven major airlines. The common thread is that there are an interest in our market or coming into our market area, but they're looking at a longer term, or I guess a longer goal for them to come into and, or expand in their markets from 24, 2024 to 2025, as they expand those markets. We're working with a proven consultant to gather data, again, that's going to help shape our message to the airlines as we go and try and lure them to our community, and then we are also going to attend an additional conference in early 2024.
Hoel, that almost looks like a airline speed dating event, what is that?
So, yes, so actually, if you can, I don't know if you can see here, that is us right there, that's Jordan Cervantes and myself right here, and Lisa's just off, off frame there, but that is exactly those two conferences that we've gone to, that's, you're given like 20 minutes, you meet with network, network planners, senior network developers for each airline respectively, and it literally is, you have a little bell that rings, five minutes left, one minute left, and then everybody gets up and moves tables.
And you, you kind of pitch your, your community, and they kind of pitch or tell you about their airline?
That's right, so we want to run through our pitch, you know, pretty mu, you know, pretty concisely, but then we also want to hear what they have to say, like what their needs are, and how we can, you know, possibly facilitate a match, you know? That is exactly what it is, speed dating for airlines.
That's cool, thank you.
So additionally, we want to secure our existing service, and we also want to improve our airline service with American Airlines. So we prepared material to engage with American Airlines and government affairs departments to discuss areas of opportunity and future success. We, I maintain communication with our American Airlines representatives related to reliability, frequencies, and fares. We're also intend to apply for a small community air service development grant that will assist in, in attaining new air service for our community. Additionally, we want to improve our overall guest experience. As we saw in that first slide that I covered, we had over 173,000 visitors to our airport, you know, we'd like to add a food and beverage opportunity there for some of those visitors to take advantage of. We still have courtesy parking out front, so there's an opportunity there for non-travelers to, to come in and, and, I guess, take advantage of, of food service out there at the airport. We also intend to provide a gift shop kiosk for any last-minute traveler needs, and we're also looking to improve our security measures out in the parking lot and also in, in the terminal building itself. And again, to provide a safe and secure facility as one of our goals year over year. We've passed the FAA Part 139 Annual Inspection in June of this year, and we've also completed a comprehensive 30-day TSA inspection, where they come and they test different access points, different procedures and policies that we have in place, to ensure that they get a timely or adequate response, and we've passed both of those this summer as well. So our plan, moving forward now, this is kind of CVB and airport come back together, our plan is to kind of give you another 90-day snapshot in December of 2023, and then we'll plan on doing two of these a year in May of '24 after kind of the spring rush, and then kind of in November to kind of cover the summer and then early fall travel again, so we have those slated for, for you all then.
This was a great idea and a great update, so I, I like the idea of this kind of as a regular update in this format paired together, that, it's a really cool snapshot, so thank you all for sharing this with us today.
Yeah, I echo Josh on that. If, do we have access to this data on a regular basis, so we can show year over year, quarter, quarter?
Yep, anything, at any time, if there's a specific thing you want to look at, by, at almost any kind of timeframe, you could look at one week, one day, one year, we can, we can narrow it in for you.
Great. So thanks, Director Quant, good, great package, and Hoel, I appreciate the, the presentation and the intentionality in your efforts to preserve and expand our, our air service out there at Waco Regional, so thanks, guys, good report.
Thank you.
But I'm appreciative of this information, serving on both Airport Advisory Committee and chairing the CVB, I'm, I'm, I love this information, and I like the fact that it was shared with all of us, because I get to see it often. I am also very pleased with the advancement that our airport is going, our, our Reno is amazing, if y'all haven't been, you need to go, and I mean, as, as more projects get finished, it's just, it, it excites me more and more that our airport. that our airport is going to be a, an, the opportunity to say welcome to Waco and, and give our visitors its first experience if they're traveling that way. I know that we have, we have heard the requests of the folks about multiple airline carriers, and I know that we're working diligently in that. In the statement, you said that those airlines that you spoke, spoke to that were indicating and showing interest will not begin the considerations to expand their market until twenty-four, twenty-five. Is that right?
That was the indication they had given us, yes, ma'am.
So we're still looking at probably twenty-five, twenty-six?
Be a likely expectation.
Very good. Um, also, I know that, that we were, has, have had a longstanding relationship with American and I, I, I know that we were, um, working to, to communicate with them as well just in keeping our relationship, um, on track and, and any advancements that can happen. I know we had more flights in pre-COVID and then we've changed, but the numbers, the fewer flights, but the numbers of seats are the same because they increased the size of the airplane. And I don't know that, that general population would know that, but that we haven't lost footing in what we're doing. But has that conversation with American happened?
As, as far as the frequency of our flights?
And just about, just making sure that things are communicated well and their staff is talking to our staff and everybody's playing nice?
We have an intention to sit down with them and kind of re-secure that commitment to our community.
Awesome.
That has not taken place, though.
Okay. Um, uh, just a general question, aviation question. I've been hearing on the news about the shortage of air traffic controllers. I know that, and I know this doesn't have anything to do with the snapshot, but I know that with flight school in, in the city, do you foresee us having any issues with air traffic controllers? And if so, are, and you know, I would like to know if there is, um, uh, work being done to that? If we could see that maybe in an, uh, an update or, or a review for the aviation meeting? But I'm just, I don't want us to get into the pickle of needing air traffic controllers and not having them because as we will expand, we will grow, so we need to make sure that we're looking at all of those things in the same vein.
Just to offer a little bit of security in that, the category of air traffic control facility that we have at our airport is a category four, and so they have to, controllers have to have build hours, just like a pilot before they can go to a larger airport. So airports like Newark that are, they're, they're suffering from retirement or, you know, that attrition, you know, there's not enough in kind of in that backlog. That's right. So we're fortunate that because we do have that flight school, we offer just enough capacity to where the FAA kind of utilizes us as kind of a training facility for their air traffic controller. So I'm pretty comfortable with that level, but if it ever becomes an issue, we'll definitely raise our hand and say we have a problem.
Thank you. It's good to know. Appreciate that.
Thank you for that report, Hoel. It's always, when I go to the airport, it's always a good experience. And going over there right now, it's a beautiful experience. It's, the renovation has been, it's awesome. And also with the convention center report, I appreciate that. Thank you for both the reports and, and I know our airport is in good hands with you, Hoel, and so I appreciate that and look forward to you expanding our airline services. I know we used to have Delta back in the day when I first started flying, uh, but they chose to leave us. So anyway, thank you for your report and thank you for your ambitious and, and forward-thinking airport initiatives that you have taken forward, and the same thing to you, Mr. Dan.
Thank you.
This is a great presentation. I, I really just think that, um, there's a lot of innovation happening and a lot of intentionality happening in both of these departments to try to really advance our economy, to advance our image, to advance tourism. And it's not by accident that I think we're seeing some of the, uh, the growth that we're seeing because we really are trying to capitalize on the moment. There's things you can't control, lightning in a bottle, um, like the tourism that comes to the silos is a rare opportunity. But I think what I'm so pleased, um, about our team is that we can look back and say, man, we really worked strategically and diligently to do all that we could to, to capitalize on this moment that we're in and solidify our economy in a meaningful way. So thank you to, to all you're doing. I'm going to echo what Councilmember Bearfield said and just say, I think that it's really important for us to continue to look at what we can do to, um, not only attract other airlines in, into the market, but also get really strategic with American and increase, if possible, increase frequency, but also, um, just consistency with those flights. And I know that your team is doing all that you can. I would, um, stand ready to help out in, in any way that I can do that as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I shared a lot of numbers with you guys, but I didn't share the one that's most important, and that's the twenty-five-plus people that work for the
Yeah. Yeah.
And those people are the reason that people are coming back here. And I, I, they all deserve special thanks. I especially want to thank the operations staff because with the, uh, uh, again, the building, I think, looks darn good. And, but when you're fifty-two years old, you need a little more work than you needed when you were twenty-two. And, and that's what these guys are doing right now, so. Building while and, uh, but all of them, everyone here is extremely, it, it's more than a job to them. They're dedicated to what they're doing and I just appreciate a lot.
Great. Well, we're excited and, uh, should be having some good numbers and projections coming up for the eclipse that we'll be seeing people fly into town and coming to stay here, so.
Amazing.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Thank you all.
All right. Mayor, we're running a few minutes behind my anticipated calendar, but we're going to stay on and keep the Spiegelville Road, um, presentation. I'm going to invite Amy Boulard-Lee Highland up for work session six-thirty-one. Where is she? There she is. She's walking her way up. Amy will be covering both the, the item that's on the agenda this afternoon as well as, um, Spiegelville expansion and a, a brief highlight on our plans for the bridge over the Middle Bosque. Amy, take it, take it swaying.
Thanks, Bradley. Um, this is going to be quick. I just have to say I have presentation envy because that was a great presentation. I think Bradley should let me go first, but. So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here to talk a little bit about the projects that we have, um, ongoing on the Spiegelville Road corridor, um, some of which is going to be on your agenda this evening for a resolution. The project area is basically from, um, US eighty-four all the way up to the bridge over the Middle Bosque River. Right now, we're looking at that in two segments, uh, one of which goes from Waco, from eighty-four up to Oak Road and the other one from Oak Road up to the bridge. So this evening, we're talking about getting, uh, your approval to move forward with doing the design work with Walker Partners for those two sections of the road as well as doing a drainage study in that area that's outlined in red because we do have some flooding in some of the houses around there and we need to figure out the best way to get the water moved through. And now is an opportune time for us to do that and figure that out and work with the church and work with the school to get a better area and environment for everybody. So why are we doing this? We're doing it for connectivity. There's a lot of increasing development in that area. There's the opportunity for a lot of development in the county on the other side of the bridge. So we need to make sure that our roadway is right-sized to make that, uh, connection between the county section of Spiegelville Road and TexDOT's US eighty-four section, both of which have been upgraded. And if we don't have that connectivity, detours are pretty extensive. They could take a lot of time, cost a lot of money for people. Detours vary between thirteen miles and sixteen miles. And there are an awful lot of facilities and services in that area that need to be able to use this corridor. Why this clicker doesn't want to click? So the schedule right now is, um, the schematic design is already complete for the road. We know what we want. We're, um, working our way through the acquisition right now. We're, uh, getting ready to make offers to people for both easements and for right-of-way acquisition that are needed for the widening road. Design will start this, this month with your approval. We'll get Walker Partners up and running. After that or concurrently with that design work, we'll be working with the utilities to make sure that we get them relocated out of the way. And then we're looking at, uh, construction in the first half of twenty-five, twenty-six. And this is, probably will be the second project that you see coming for construction out of our new, uh, capacity program that's going to be funded because we have that street maintenance fee that, that you all approved. So the first one's going to be probably chapel and this will be the second one that you will see. So just to let you know where we're at with some critical items. We've completed our Waters of the U.S. report, uh, didn't have any issues, and our hazardous materials report. We will have to do an archaeological report, but we won't be doing that until we decide what our design of the bridge is so we know what the footprint is that we have to study. As I said, we're in the midst of, um, doing our easements and acquisitions. Our next step is making offers to property owners and we will be starting our design work with a topographic survey. Other critical items, uh, that regional detention study that I referred to will also start this month if you approve our item on the agenda this evening, and that's going to run concurrently with the roadway design. And then we'll be working with utilities to, to design whatever upgrades are needed for the water and wastewater infrastructure. And just a, an update on where we're at with the replacement of the bridge. You all know that we, we did submit a grant application for federal funding. We were not successful in getting that grant this time, but we did have a pretty extensive feedback meeting with FHWA, so we know what areas of our grant application we didn't get the highest scores on. So we're working on retooling that and we'll be resubmitting it. We also have received in-house funding of about two-point-six million to date, and we do have a one-point-seven-six million federal earmark, but it is at this point only an earmark. It's not available to us to spend it. It just has our name on it. So at some point, we'll, we'll be getting it and we'll know what we can, um, spend it on. But in the meantime, we're slow-rolling work on the bridge because a lot of times that money comes with certain requirements and we can't get refunded if we've already spent the money.
And what's the price tag on the bridge?
Uh, I think it was about seventeen-point-six was what we put in the grant application for.
Do you anticipate getting that grant next time around?
Boy, I sure hope so.
But is the, when is the next, um, cycle for that?
Should be coming out shortly, another notice of funding opportunity. And we're, we're already working with our lobbyists to help us with that application and what we need to do and our economists.
I was like, we got feedback on the last application that would give us a better indication of what we need to do this time?
Yeah, they went section by section, so we know there's only two sections that we need to, to put some significant work into. And we actually going into it, we knew they were weak when we did it, but we had short time
That's fair.
to get that in, and, and so we're going to be working really hard on those. I think, oh, and just a reminder, why we're replacing the bridge. Right now, it's a two-lane bridge, um, and it's, it's twelve-foot lanes, but there's no shoulders, there's no sidewalks. There's, it's a dangerous bridge if you're not a driver. Um, there's not a recovery area. We can't have walkers on it. It's hard to have bicyclists. So it doesn't meet the current safety standards. It's what's called functionally obsolete at this point in time. It still functions, but it doesn't have a configuration that's optimal for the traffic that it has now or that we know it's going to have in the future with all the development that will be going out in that area. So this is what we're looking at again. We want two lanes in each direction and we'd like a wide sidewalk, shared use for bicycles and pedestrians on either side. And that's really going to be critical because we have the school in that area and that's a, uh, intermediate, no, it's a middle school now. So it has a lot more potential to have walkers using that school. So including sidewalks along Spiegelville and including sidewalks along the bridge are going to be critical for the future in that area. And that's it. Questions?
I'll start, Amy. Uh, great presentation. Any presentation has a map and a Gantt chart in it. To me, rises to the top of presentations, so. Uh, so, great presentation. Yeah, this is a major arterial out in District Five that, uh, joins a lot of churches and schools and neighborhoods and really one of the main, I'd say, two or three, uh, streets out there, Harris Creek, uh, Road, and Bosque Lane, and Spiegelville Road, uh, O'Leary Road. It's a two-lane county road right now, basically, and we're bringing it into city standards here just to handle the, the traffic and the growth out there. I like how we divided this thing into four parts, the US eighty-four to Oak Road, Oak Road to the bridge, the bridge itself, and then the drainage issues around that and how that gets funded and how that gets sequenced over the next few years will be, uh, interesting. Thanks to Walker Partners. I see you guys here today. Uh, you guys are great. Appreciate everything you do for the city and on this project as well. I, one question I did have, and you brought in, you, the one diagram had this, the walking areas on the bridge itself. I get a lot of feedback out there from my constituents about sidewalks on, right on, on either side of, uh, of Spiegelville Road as it, as it comes back to eighty-four. I don't know if that's in the plan or on one side or?
Yeah, they're in the plans. I mean, we're, we're looking at incorporating them on both sides. I think there are a few areas that we will not be able to do that, in which case they'll have to cross over. But yeah, the, as much as possible, I think we would cross over at Oak Road if we couldn't keep it continuous on the other side.
Great. Thanks. Great presentation.
Yeah, Amy, thank you for all that, you, thank you for this presentation, but for all that your department is doing across the city. I know that you've helped several of us out with, uh, various traffic calming and other, uh, other issues that have come up in our districts recently, but, but just the big street capacity program that's about to get rolled out thanks to the new funding mechanism, I'm excited about it. I think, you know, as Councilmember Holmes said and as we're anticipating that what we currently call the county on the other side of the lake between Waco China Spring and Waco Highway eighty-four may someday be the city of Waco and to do this work now, not only will it protect those schoolchildren walking to work, walking to school and the motorists on that very narrow bridge that I know many of us have traveled over, but I think this will be good for future planning as development continues and is expected to continue in that area. So thank you. Appreciate the foresight here. I know it's a heavy lift financially, but hopefully we can get some help from the federal government.
Anything else? Thank you, Amy. Appreciate it.
Yeah, if you're up for it, I think, uh, won't take us, we've got one slide, actually technically two with the intro slide. But I think, I think we're queued up and still have time for a break and dinner and an exec session, exec session. Laura, why don't you, um, kick us off on the discussion of the one lone planning public hearing?
Yes, sir. I will be very brief because we have one, one public hearing. And this is to bring our zoning ordinance into compliance with the recently passed, um, House Bill seventeen-fifty regarding agricultural operations. There are some other items in this House bill, but this is only focusing on the amendments to the zoning ordinance. So it will be effective September first, or a couple of days past, but we do not have a lot of agricultural users knocking on our door right now, so we're okay. So applicability of what cities can require regarding agricultural operations. So the first thing the ordinance does is add a definition for agricultural operations, and we pulled that definition directly out of the bill, so it conforms to that. And then with that, we had RE, R-one-A, R-one-B, and M-two zoning districts already listed some type of agricultural operation as being permitted in those districts. We went ahead and, um, changed the way it was worded so that it matched the, the word agricultural operations to bring that consistency in. And then as required by the House bill to bring it into compliance, we added agricultural operations into all of our other zoning districts to comply.
A brief question on that. So in, in the past, say if you were in a single-family residential, R-one-B residential zoning and you wanted to keep chickens in your yard or a horse, and I've seen, I remember sitting on that board and seeing those variance requests, you would request a variance from the Animal Welfare Board for that. Want chickens or a horse under this new rule in that type of zoning, do you get that without a request or a permit?
So, so, um, Councilmember, if I can just, um, step in real quickly. All this, uh, is proposing to do is add agriculture uses as a zoning use, and then we have some other And then we have some other ordinances that deal with specific regulations that we will be looking at and examining as we go forward.
To be continued?
Yes.
Okay.
We do not get into the chickens in the zoning ordinance. Any other questions on this line? Please move forward.
Thank you so much. Are there any requests for future agenda items? If not, we will recess the work session and reconvene for regular session, reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the City Secretary at 5:05 PM.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Attorney briefing Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071. Proposed landfill pursuant to Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Permit Number MSW 2400 and Surrounding Properties, Real Property Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, and Economic Development Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.078, or 087. We are now in executive session.